We'd like to read to you our statement that we operate under. This is a public hearing, and we're the Putnam County Planning Commission. We're the designated local planning agency for the county as described under Title 11, Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this committee will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting on -- we don't have the date. Don't worry, that's okay, we'll get it. The members, procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will take comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by public comments concerning the request. We ask that you please direct all statements to the commission and not to other people in the audience. And before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the commission. This motion will be voted on by the commission members and become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final determination. As members of the Putnam County Planning Commission, we pledge to come to meetings prepared for the items on the agenda, willing and ready to listen carefully and courteously, and to make informed decisions based on the facts presented and what we feel is in the best interest of the people of Putnam County. We will refrain from unnecessary interruptions and will be appreciative and respectful toward applicants, members of the staff, and other members of the commission. We will support the decisions made by the majority and will be fair and objective in all that we do as members of the Putnam County Planning Commission. I need to ask, are there any conflicts of interest that anyone has with either of the cases we're hearing today? Have there been any ex parte communications with any members or applicants for any of the cases we've had? Okey dokey. This time, we do have an item on our agenda that happens every time the first meeting of the year, and I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Perry, our legal counsel, to handle this. We do the election of our chairperson and our vice chairperson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Board. We have a quorum, and in the interest of time, may I ask the members if there is anyone who is not ready, willing, and able to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of the position in the event they are elected either chairperson or vice chairperson?
Me.
Is there any member who would request that they not be nominated for either position?
Me.
All the males don't want to do it, so this ought to be easier.
We have Mr. DeSantis, and Mr. Hafner, and Mr. Dantzler that have raised their hands.
I got two of them up.
Does any member object to the vote being conducted by a show of hands, and this is simply to be more accurate? All right, very well. The floor is open for nominations for chairperson. Do I hear any nominations?
I nominate that we keep Susan in the same chair we've had for several years, which has done an awesome job.
Second.
Okay. Our chair, Ms. Roberts, has been nominated. Do I hear any other nominations?
None.
Hearing no nominations, nominations are closed. All in favor of Ms. Roberts remaining our chair, please raise your right hand. Okay? All four, no against. Congratulations, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for your confidence.
The floor is now open for nominations for vice chair. Do I hear any nominations?
I would nominate her for.
I'll second.
Okay, we have Ms. Fortner nominated and seconded. Do I hear any other nominations?
None.
Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of Ms. Fortner as our vice chair, please raise your right hand. All four, none against. Thank you very much, congratulations, Ms. Fortner.
Thank you.
As our vice chair.
You better be at all the meetings.
Madam Chair, I turn the meeting back over to you.
It will be an unorganized mess if I'm doing it. Thank you all, and thank you for your forbearance for that little piece of housekeeping. At this time, I'd like to call on Joseph, who is our senior planner, and ask him to present case number one, which is case SM 21 002.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Joe Sealy with Planning and Development Services. This is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. The application was submitted by Palaca Properties LLC. It's submitted a future land use map from agricultural to industrial. It's located at 558 North Highway 17 in Palaca, Florida. The future land use is currently agriculture, and the zoning district is heavy industrial. It's only -- the proposed future land use map amendment is only proposed for the northern 8.1, approximately 8.1 acres of the site, because the rest is special flood hazard area and wetlands. The property came to us, it's been exist -- that site's been -- or the use has been existing as a truck repair facility and office for the last 25 years. However, they ceased to operate their, I think it was new line product, was leased in there for 25 years. They moved elsewhere, and then the owner tried to lease the property. And our Land Development Code Section 45, 814, and 13 states that if a use is a nonconforming use is left vacant or not used for 240 consecutive days, it can't be used except in conformance with the Land Development Code, so that's why we're here. Here is an aerial of the property, as you can see, it's in a -- the northern portion of the property is the office area and the truck repair facility. The southern portion of the parcel is wetlands and flood hazard area. The zoning of the property is currently industrial, and as you can see, other properties to the west are also industrial, so it is a commercial industrial node, and is compatible with surrounding uses. The future land use is agricultural, as you can see across the street there to the west, those parcels are, several of them are industrial future land use designations. So as I mentioned, the agricultural land use does not allow for a truck repair facility or something as intensive as in that nature. However, the industrial category does allow for that type of use, which is why we're here today, to just bring the property into compliance. And staff finds the proposed amendments consistent with the comp plan and recommends approval with a request to amend the future land use from agricultural to industrial.
Thank you, Joseph. Are there any questions from the board to Joseph?
How many acres of wetlands is that? Is that 16? Did I read that?
It's close to 16, yeah, approximately 16 and 20, yeah.
Okay.
So the future land use on the wetlands is still going to be agricultural. Future land use for the wetlands will still be agricultural?
It'll remain agricultural, correct.
And it'll just follow that little curve? Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Is the applicant or the applicant's agent here? Would you like to speak? Mr. Young, come on up.
George Young, 222 North Third Street here in Palaca, on behalf of what we call Palacha Properties, which is a blend of Palaca and Chattanooga, which is where the owners are from, just in case you were wondering.
I just thought they didn't know it was called Palaca when they...
That was intentional, so I've been told. I don't know there's much more to say other than what the planner has proposed to you. It probably wouldn't even be before the commission right now, except for a combination of two things. The senior Mr. Merritt passed away during the first part of the COVID epidemic that we were all dealing with, and by the time his son was able to get a hold of all of his affairs, including the business down here, he had a tenant that decided to consolidate and move their operations up to Duval County. So he wasn't able to identify that and focus on it and get a tenant in there within that timeframe. So the timeframe passed, and then by the time they had a new tenant to come in, we ran into this problem, and we've been dealing with it ever since. I don't know if there's any other questions or...
Yeah, any questions of Mr. Young? Thank you for being here, and thank you for representing your client and explaining how they got their name.
Well, I figured I ought to entertain you a little bit.
I figure Palaca sneezed and said, "Achoo," you know.
No, Palaca and Chattanooga.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak either in favor or against this application? If you are, please come forward and state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board then for consideration. Erin.
I move that we recommend approval of the small-scale comprehensive plan amendment as consistent with our goals, objectives, and policies of Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're going to take Jerry this time. No offense, Joel. Okay, any discussion on this before we vote? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. All opposed, please signify by saying no. Thank you. The case carries, and we'll take it forward to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Our next case that we have to hear today is a codes amendment case 21-005. And Zach, you're presenting this.
For the record, Zachary Baker, Planner 2. Today, I'm presenting a Land Development Code text amendment. An application came in by Mr. Justin Morris requesting an amendment to Article 2, Division 2, Section 4559, and Article 2, Division 3, Section 4572, requesting to make a distinction between commercial and personal use sawmills as regulated by the Land Development Code. The subject Land Development Code text amendment proposes to revise allowances for sawmill operations in the agricultural zoning district. The Land Development Code currently permits sawmill operations by right in the industrial heavy zoning designation. The current Land Development Code permits sawmills where wood to be processed is grown from trees on the site of the sawmill... from trees on the site of the sawmill by special use permit approval in the agriculture zoning The applicant is requesting an amendment to the Land Development Code to eliminate current restrictions on the use of a sawmill as a commercial agriculture-related use in the agriculture zoning district. The applicant proposes to eliminate the prohibition on bringing of logs from off-site for use in the sawmill. Applicant further proposes to permit any sawmill as commercial agriculture-related use to be restricted only based on the horsepower of that sawmill. Additionally, the proposed text amendment would add an additional use to be called sawmills for personal use under the allowances by right in the agricultural zoning district with the same horsepower limitation on the motor. This is the recommendation by the applicant. Below is a version of the applicant's proposed changes in red, proposed deletions or strike through, proposed additions or underline. Section 4559, commercial ag-related sawmill where wood is from trees grown on the site of the sawmill is to be removed. Where the sawmill is powered by a motor not to exceed 40 horsepower is to be added. Furthermore, the recommendation from the applicant is a same thing, strike through is to be removed, underline is for proposed additions. And Section 4572 of agriculture, under subsection C, which is certain uses allowed in the ag district, we would be adding number six, sawmills for personal use where the sawmill is powered by a motor not to exceed 40 horsepower. I'm going to read from the staff report some of the Cliff Notes for why we have proposed our recommendation for this. The proposed text amendment presents an alteration of the current regulations on sawmills that are intended to protect property-zoned agriculture in the county from the adverse effects posed by a sawmill operation. The intent of the present special use requirement and restriction on the use of a sawmill to use only wood grown on-site is to protect the viability of areas that have historically been predominantly residential in character but zoned agriculture, and to protect agricultural uses that could be negatively impacted by the operation of a sawmill in close proximity. Please bear with me, I'm trying to lose my voice, but I won't do it today. The special use permit required for a proposed sawmill on land-zoned agriculture is intended to ensure that all of the following criteria are met prior to allowing that use. These are the criteria we would review whenever we're issuing a special use permit. The use is consistent with the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and meets all concurrency requirements. The use will conform to all applicable regulations of the code and the zoning district in which they are proposed. The use will not adversely impact nor unduly restrict the enjoyment of permitted uses in the surrounding area. The use will not substantially diminish or impair property values in the area nor impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for permitted uses. Adequate access roads, on-site parking, on-site loading, and unloading births and drainage have been or will be provided where required. Adequate measures have been taken to provide ingress and egress to the property that are designed in a manner to minimize traffic impacts on local roads. Adequate screening and buffering of the special use will be provided to protect surrounding uses. There will be no undue risks to persons or property from hazardous substances, and that the proposed special use will not adversely affect the general public health, safety, welfare of residents of Putnam County. When in an agricultural or residential setting, sawmills could pose detrimental effects to surrounding properties that would not adequately, would not be adequately measured if this use were allowed by right in the agricultural zoning district. If the use were allowed by right, one could in theory commence operation of a sawmill on a small tract of land zoned agriculture within an existing single-family subdivision with no review by staff or the zoning board of adjustments to determine the appropriateness of the use on the particular piece of property. Furthermore, staff is not equipped to measure horsepower output in a motor, excuse me, which would render enforcement of the horsepower restriction difficult, if not impossible, without additional resources. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the proposed changes as presented by the applicant. It is the position of staff that the proposal below would continue to protect residential and agricultural uses on ag-zoned lands while providing an additional avenue by which a landowner may operate a sawmill with the use of a special permit approved without the wood sourcing restriction. These are the staff's recommendations. Strike through is to delete them, underline is additions. We would add on-site sawmills with the same wood as from trees that are grown on the site of the sawmill. Then we would also add an entirely new section for off-site sawmills where wood is from trees grown off-site and may be grown on-site. Off-site sawmills must abide by the following supplemental standards. The sawmill must be located on a parcel of land equal to or exceeding 15 acres in size. An off-site sawmill operation must be set back 500 feet from all property lines. The sawmill will be required to be located on a county-maintained collector or arterial road and must not require significant non-residential traffic to pass through established neighborhoods. Reasons why we came up with this recommendation, staff has not made any changes to the existing use allowing a sawmill using wood from trees grown on-site with approval of a special use permit, which staff believes that such requests can be adequately reviewed for compatibility through the special use permit analysis. Staff recognizes that there may be sites zoned agriculture that would be appropriate for a sawmill where wood may be brought from sites other than the site of the sawmill. To accommodate this possible use, staff proposes adding an additional use for the commercial agriculture-related uses, which is still subject to an approved special use permit. The added use would be subject to several additional requirements due to the increased intensity posed by a sawmill that could potentially receive a continuous supply of wood, such as minimum acreage requirements, increased setbacks, and similar locational criteria required by the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan for a sawmill use located in the industrial future land use category. The distance restriction would ensure that noise levels are reduced enough to be acceptable for residential standards and prevent disruption of farm livestock operations. The standard for tolerable urban residential noise level is between 55 and 60 decibels, according to a study published by the National Institute of Health, and is approximately the standard used in most professional urban and regional plannings. OSHA states that, excuse me, that the machinery associated with a sawmill operates between 95 and 110 decibels. In sound measurement, the inverse square law describes the reduction of the intensity of sound over distance. A common way of expressing the inverse square law in acoustics, as further explained in OSHA's technical manual, Section 3, Chapter 5, is that in a free field, sound pressure measured in decibels decreases six decibels each time the distance from a point source is doubled, regardless of the unit of measurement. Therefore, the sound level outside of a residence that is a distance of 512 feet from the point source of the sound, in this case, the sawmill, separated only by a free field, assuming that at one foot, the distance of the sound is measured at 110 decibels, would theoretically be 56 decibels. Any such sawmill operation would be required to be reviewed by and receive approval from the Development Review Committee, and may be required to provide roadway improvements to maintain minimum adopted levels of service and minimum facility standards as allowed by Article 5 of the Land Development Code of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends approval of staff suggested revisions to LDC Section 4559.
Are there questions of staff? I have one question. In the revision, you were talking about monitoring the traffic. How would that be done?
We would ask the applicant to complete a concurrency application, in which we would give that application to Public Works and have them assess whether or not the proposed incoming traffic would pose any sort of deterioration in the level of service of those roads.
Okay. And if it does, would the owner of the sawmill be liable for helping to remedy those problems?
Yes, ma'am. It would be the applicant's responsibility to pay to have whatever road improvements made.
Is that in your proposal?
It would be in the special use criteria whenever we review that.
Would it be periodic checks, or is it just the one time?
Just the one time that I know of, sir.
Public Works wouldn't monitor this on an annual basis or something like that, or is that too much to put on Public Works?
If I may. Public Works, Madam Chair, would not monitor that on an annual basis. They would, so the applicant, any operator, has a responsibility to maintain level of service, and they are approved for a certain impact through their concurrency evaluation and through the development review process, so they have to maintain that impact. If they increase the impact, they would have to go back to the Development Review Committee to ensure that any impacts are mitigated through improvements or any other...
So this would be self-monitored?
Well, actually, I guess anybody that lives around there would be able to protest or something if it was exceeding what it should be.
Someone could file a code enforced, or a code complaint.
So, the way I understand it now is that somebody goes into an agricultural area that wanting to use a sawmill to bring in trees that's not growing on the property, they have to get a special use permit, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and the trees could only be sourced from on-site as it stands now.
That's correct, that no trees would be brought in on a truck.
Correct.
And with your new revision, exactly what are you, they are going to be able, but it's still kind of a special use permit, right?
Yes, sir. So we're adding a use, we're maintaining the on-site sawmill would be left alone, they wouldn't have the additional criteria. We would be adding a use called the off-site sawmill, where they could source from off-site and on-site, and they would have to meet those criteria.
So it wouldn't just be carte blanche?
Correct.
Okay.
I got one.
Mr. Swing, you want to talk into the microphone?
I guess.
Yeah, turn it on. There you go.
Light's really good. It says something about personal use, and what I'm looking, hearing what you're saying, it's more like a commercial business.
Correct.
Are we, are we looking for personal use? Like if I've got 100 acres and I've seen these little sawmills, is that what we're talking about, or are we talking about employees and things?
So the applicant's proposal would add a use in there, which we are not recommending, called a personal sawmill. And personal sawmills as an ancillary use to a residential property are already allowed. We don't have to call it out in the code to allow that, just as we wouldn't call out any other ancillary, well, I shouldn't say any other, but many other ancillary uses in the code, hobby uses. As long as they don't pass the threshold of being commercial, then they would be fine. But what we're recommending is, yes, allowance of a commercial sawmill in agriculture with those restrictions, just so that we could allow off-site sourcing of wood. With those restrictions, staff doesn't believe that it would be any kind of nuisance.
But that's not what he's asking for, is that...
Correct. Well, no, there are two proposals in there. There's a proposal to add a personal sawmill, and then there's a proposal to add a sawmill without a special use permit up to 40 horsepower by right in the agriculture zoning district.
And include off-site lumber, off-site timber.
Correct, that's right. That would remove that restriction for that use.
But we don't have employees under what he's proposing, we're not, we have no employees. If he wants to go in his backyard and cut up a tree, he can, he can do that now.
Correct. As a hobby sawmill, or, excuse me, a hobby saw, not a sawmill. I don't want to get those two confused.
A hobby saw.
For personal use.
Use, so, personal use of a saw.
This is the 40 horsepower thing you're talking about?
That's what the applicant, well, no, no, no. The applicant has proposed two different uses. There's an addition of a hobby saw, and then, which is called a hobby sawmill, and then there's the addition of the striking of where wood is sourced from on-site, or, I think that's what that says, and the addition of language stating that anyone could operate a sawmill up to 40 horsepower in an agricultural district without the need for a special use permit.
For personal use.
That, that's not what the language says. I believe the applicant could probably explain that better than I could, what the intent of that is, but the reason that we recommend a denial of that is because the language doesn't say that. And for personal use, the use of a saw is already allowed.
And we're looking at a change to the Land Development Code, which would apply to anything coming forward. It would not just apply to this single applicant. This is not a special use permit we're looking at, we're looking at changing the code so that everybody down the road would have these same privileges.
And we don't have that now. I mean, if I wanted to go in my backyard, I have over the 15 acres. I don't really know exactly what this hobby saw is, but we're going to, I'm going to assume it's under this 40 horsepower thing. I can do that right now, we don't need to do anything.
We don't have any language of referring to horsepower now, but, correct. You could go, you could use intermittently a saw in your backyard, as long as it did not become a nuisance to your neighbors, you could use a saw just to create personal crafts or anything, I mean, anything that you wanted to use in your home.
If you wanted to mill lumber for your house, you could...
As long as you got the lumber off of your own land.
Precisely. Well, no, it's, it's not, I don't want to, so that's the use that requires a special use permit, but if you're using just, if you're using a saw intermittently or for a project, building something for your house, you've pulled an owner-builder permit and you want to furnish your house or add trim to your house, you can do that now, and it doesn't have to be sourced from on-site. You could go buy the lumber, you could have a friend give you a log.
And make your trim.
Correct.
But, I mean, if I read it correct, currently it says sawmill where wood is grown from trees, so that's not just a saw, that's like you're milling the wood.
Correct, and we have a definition for sawmill in the code that explains that that's a lot more than simply just a personal use. Correct.
Is there a restriction for how many sawmills can be put on a certain-sized piece of property at all? You know, you could run that 110 decibels to 330 to put three sawmills.
So currently, the restriction would be placed by the Zoning Board of Adjustments. It's assumed that when someone comes in for a special use permit, they're only asking for one, and certainly, we would recommend conditioning it if they requested more than one, and if we analyze, through our analysis, we saw that it would be burdensome to neighbors or detrimental in some way, we would condition that it be only one.
But if we went with what the applicant is making an applicant for, is there any restrictions in how many sawmills that you put on each property?
No, sir. So the sawmill, as proposed by the applicant, would be allowed by right. It would require no review by staff or the ZBOA to determine the appropriateness of the land. They would likely still have to go through DRC, but the DRC, the Development Review Committee, can't really control uses as much as you can at the zoning stage.
So to recap, what we're looking at is an applicant has requested to amend the current language, and it's staff recommendation that we deny that particular request and that we substitute that section in the code with what Zach has outlined for us.
Yes, ma'am.
That's kind of drawing it down to a nutshell.
And the advantage of the special use permit is that everybody around adjacent landowners and stuff... And the advantage of the special use permit is that everybody around adjacent landowners and stuff would be notified that special use is being applied.
Yes, sir.
Now, there's no employees involved in any form of, like.
There could be. If.
See, I would have a problem with employees. I mean, I'd be for, if I wanted to do something, or you wanted to do something on your property, I have no problem with that part of it, but I'm not, I don't want to run an ad and hire three or four guys to come, now it becomes a commercial business. And that I would object to, but as far as, as you call it a hobby, I don't know if I would call it a hobby.
Well, I'm using, I'm using it more, I'm using the applicant's words, but yeah, I mean, I think the applicant intends to say that it's just a a personal use.
Right.
Personal use, I personally don't have a problem with the personal use, but I would have a big problem with a, a commercial use. And that commercial use would definitely kick in if you had employees.
And you would, that would be, they would be required to have a business license for that?
No, ma'am. The county ceased collecting business licenses in
They don't have them anymore.
Two thousand seventeen.
Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
I think the biggest concern I would have, is this going to be a business where they're going to be selling lumber off the property? That's what it sounds like. And that, that's the big question I would have. Is it a business to be a lumberyard?
Well, and that, if we, if we do this, it would apply to anybody who wanted to do it down the road, not, not just this particular applicant.
Opening up a business on a piece of property, fifteen acres or more, where they are going to import trees from tree cutters, chop it up, make lumber, and sell it. So you're looking at a commercial operation, no matter how you cut it.
It could well be that, yes.
Yeah. And you're going to give them open, an open way to do it because there's nobody double checking it. So I would have a problem unless we hear from the developer, from the department, as we're chatting.
I understand the first one pretty good. I'm with what you're proposing to do. Why are you trying to change the, just the special use permit? The special use permit seems like that would be the best scenario because each property is looked at individually. And so there's some agricultural properties that, yeah, I think it'd be great if they wanted to put a sawmill. But if they want to go into a subdivision that were zoned agricultural, I mean, I think, I think it would always have to be an individual basis versus trying to make it united. I guess I'm asking, why do y'all want to change it?
So we proposed the changes only to satisfy what, what was perceived as a need to allow offsite sourcing of wood. We had a special use permit come before us recently, probably back in October, and the individual was not able to source from offsite. Now, that site would not have been appropriate for offsite sourcing. But we did see a need, a potential need in the county to allow offsite sourcing of wood in agricultural areas if they were vast areas that were sufficiently separated from residential uses and could be buffered and, and sound could be mitigated in the manner that we proposed. So we're proposing, just to, I guess to summarize what I, what I previously said, hobby sawmills or personal use of, excuse me, hobby saws, I should say. Personal use of a saw as a hobby is already allowed. It's never been a problem. We've never, to my knowledge, had a code case on the personal use of a saw for, as a hobby. Or to furnish your house in some way. So then we saw a potential need, and so we proposed our alternative, which is not exactly the exact opposite of what the applicant is requesting. I believe the applicant simply wanted to add the use of a hobby saw. One, to clarify that it was allowed, and two, the, the second use was to allow offsite sourcing of wood. Now, the applicant can speak to that better than I can. I know the initial frustration or, or desire was to allow, to be able to allow offsite sourcing of wood, and that's why we, the staff started exploring that.
Okay, let me ask a question. In nowhere in your proposed change, that you're proposing as a substitution, does it say anything about special use permit being required for this?
So all commercial agricultural uses are listed as required, you, you have to have a special use permit. It's listed above. So any kind of commercial agricultural, agricultural use would be required to have.
So if a sawmill were to be created under the proposed code, it would still require a special use permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Both in the current code that restricts to only onsite in ag and in the proposed code where we are, we're adding a use. Both would have to.
Both would require a special use permit through the ZBOA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If it's commercial, I have no problem with that, requiring that special use permit. But if it's, if we want to do it in my backyard, which I don't think I could do anyway, but if I had the capabilities to push something through there and get a straight cut.
I think the difference is if you were bringing in lumber or timber from offsite, the special use permit would be necessary because you would be coming through, transporting that timber through other land to get to your site, rather than just sourcing that, that lumber from onsite, that timber from onsite.
Well, when I go to Home Depot and I transport these wood, wood from there to my site, and then I, I, I run it through planters and things like that.
Sure. That's personal hobby use.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what you just described.
Well, no, I'm not, I was describing an eighteen wheeler bringing, bringing full logs. Bringing logs, bringing trees in, bringing the logs in to be milled.
Are these, I need to ask the applicant.
We will in a minute, as soon as we finish, we will.
I'm confused on what.
Okay. We'll, we'll get to you in just a minute, as soon as we finish working with staff. So right now, anything would require a special use permit? Am I correct?
Not, not a, an ancillary use of a saw.
Right, not a personal use of a saw. I mean, I can take my circular saw into my garage and I can cut a two by four. And that's not going to have a problem. I can take my table saw and cut plywood. It's not going to have a problem. But if I were to be bringing in timber from across the street or from somebody else's property, then it becomes a problem.
Correct. A commercial use, a continuous operation.
And there's commercial.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the commercial, is there, do we key that to employees or to sales?
No, sir. We key that to the, the definition of a sawmill. So we would not consider a personal use a sawmill.
Okay. Anything else to ask of staff before you bring the applicant up to speak?
Let's hear from the applicant. I'm a little confused.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Mr. Dansel's got the floor.
I think that, I just hear some confusion amongst us is that we can use our table saws and everything. We don't, we don't have to worry about that. But when you bring a sawmill in,
Right.
you can, you can cut your personal, like if you cut trees down, you can cut that wood up and use it yourself. But you just can't bring it from offsite and use it. And if it's a hobby, you know, sometimes people make monies off of, off of hobbies too. I know a lot of people raise cattle and they call it a hobby. But, but anyway, that's, I think that's what it is. We can use planers, we can do whatever we want to. It's like, you know, I do that all the time. People, I don't have to go get a permit.
No. That doesn't require a permit or anything. But when you bring a sawmill in and you bring in, bring in timber from offsite.
Do we have a picture, does anybody have a picture of what a sawmill is? Because my, what I'm thinking of a sawmill is, I, I, I think we got.
It's, it's a big machine. It's a big blade on a conveyor belt that runs wood through it to cut it into dimensional lumber.
No, there's a lot of big bandsaws too. The bandsaw just run through the.
Right. Either a blade or a bandsaw.
Okay, there was one close to my house, ten years ago maybe. And it was nothing but I would consider big. It was like a little toy type thing. And they, they had trees and they, they made like tuba fours out of.
That's, that's a sawmill. It mills the wood.
It was very small. It wasn't.
They don't take much these days.
It could be the size of a small table saw.
They've got small ones and they've got commercial ones.
They've got big ones and they've got little ones.
Yep.
And it's depends on how much volume the person wants to cut and how much money he wants to put out.
The horsepower, you said you didn't have no way to tell what the horsepower is?
We can tell by looking at the, the etching on the side. Correct. But we, we don't have the staff resources to be constantly monitoring whether they have increased the horsepower or.
We are expecting self monitoring of this until there's a complaint. Then we check it out, and if there's a problem with it, then we go to a code violation. But in the meantime, I think we've pretty much beat the horse to death up here. Can we bring the applicant up? And please come up and state your name and address for the record. And give us your presentation and tell us your side of the story.
Everything y'all talk about here, I intend on addressing. My name is Justin Morris. I live at one eighty Stokes Landing Road in Polacka. A little bit about me, I'm a general contractor. I've been a building inspector for the county for years. I'm currently the building official for the town of Malaka, so I'm not just some John Q citizen coming up here without the ability to understand what the Land Development Code and interpretation of codes and how these things go. It's part of my job that I do every day, so. Let me get this presentation. Where am I at? There, Gabriel?
I have little boxes on my.
Oh, there it is. I got it, I got it.
It's file manager.
That stick. There's the presentation. Hopefully, everything will translate from my Mac to this computer.
You're up just about.
So we might get to actually see this. Let's get rid of that. View.
What the little screen?
Slide show. Where do I see slide show? There it is. Maybe.
Zach, can you help him out there?
Yeah, any, any help here would be appreciated. This is the opposite of what mine is.
Where'd your daughter go? Let's bring her back.
Yeah, no kidding. Can we see it there? Okay, all right.
Okay.
So, land development codes. We're here to change some land development codes. I'm going to touch on some of the things that I'm going to address. We're going to address the purpose of these changes, deficiencies in the current land development code. We're going to define different classes of sawmills, which is what I think you guys were kind of having an issue with up here. I wanted to make a note that the only zoning district we are talking about is ag. So you were mentioning residential areas and this and that. We're, the only zoning district we are talking about in this whole thing.
We do have residents in agriculture signing that.
Yes, ma'am. No, I, no, I understand the difference between use and, and the zoning districts. But notice that we're not trying to put sawmills into residential areas or, or into other zoning districts other than ag. Where in most cases you would expect agriculture related activities occur. The ultimate goal of what I'm doing here today is exactly this. SUP should not be required for small scale mills. And I'll get into what a small scale mill is here in just a few minutes. But that, in, in the grand scheme of what I am doing here today, that is what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to make it where we are not extending a overregulation to what is in effect an agricultural tool, not a, not anything beyond what would normally be seen on a farm or, or some other farm related equipment. And another important note is to note that code enforcement can still regulate commercial use, truly commercial use. Will come in through a codes complaint. They have the ability to go out and say, yes, they are having a commercial use and can regulate that through a special use permit. Purpose of the change. The purpose of the change is not to require SUP for small scale mill. The proposed changes will allow many Putnam County citizens to continue to use the equipment already in operation without being in violation of current land development codes. And when I say a lot of citizens, there are dozens of these small scale portable mills throughout Putnam County. As a building inspector for the county, because I have been a sawyer for fifteen or eighteen years, running my own saw and running other people's saws, helping friends with their saws, when I see a saw, I am attracted to it. And when I talk to, when I, when I'm out doing inspections as a building inspector and would run across these saws, my first inclination is to forget what I was doing as an inspection and talk about that saw right there. What do you like? What don't you like? Why'd you buy that model? Why'd you buy that brand? And so as a building inspector, I've seen dozens and dozens of these saws throughout Putnam County, so I know they're there. There is currently a cloud hanging over the head of most of these operators because they feel like the hammer of codes enforcement can fall on them because they understand that a sawmill operation, when viewed as a large scale thing, planning tends to look down on. So we have to have, the, the purpose of what I'm doing here today is to help put into black and white the ability of people that own these small scale saws to say, look, there, it says it right there that I can't be bothered for doing this stuff that I'm doing personally. The specific changes that I recommend, the forty horse, and we'll get to this a little bit later. There were strict noise to the levels of residential lawnmower. When, when we talk about a forty horsepower lawnmower, it's not uncommon to have a forty horsepower lawn, lawnmower engine on a zero turn lawnmower. Like that, the same motor that runs these small scale mills is the same motor you would see on a lawnmower generated, some of these other pieces of just regular equipment that you expect to see on a job site, you expect to see doing stuff in, in residential areas and different jobs. So it's the, the noise as being a concern, they brought up a graphic on OSHA this and OSHA that, and it said sawmills. And, and that, that statement right there was exactly the, the, the difference of opinion I have between planning, the opinion of what's going on in mine, is they lump all those sawmills. It said sawmills, decibels, blah, 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 a hundred, a hundred and fifty, whatever it was. That was without recognition that there are different types of sawmills. You're not going to get the same noise from a forty horsepower saw as you would a two hundred horsepower saw. So it's, it's a, it's a failure to try to apply that OSHA standard to something that, that really shouldn't be applied to. Because when OSHA talks about sawmills, they are not talking about these small scale mills that I'm talking about today. The changes that I'm proposing will not prevent the higher production rate mills from requiring a SUP. When you get, it, it takes a certain level to get to a commercial status where you can actually produce lumber and be viable. So when you get to that point, it's going to be over a forty horsepower engine. It's going to be in upwards of sixty or eighty horsepower to get to a point where you can viably produce lumber. And at that point, that goes beyond the changes that I'm requesting and puts it right back into the wheelhouse of planning and codes enforcement where they can still apply a special use permit. One of the comments staffing made was that they, they don't have the ability to, to, to rate horsepower. It would, it would increase, it would increase their need of staffing and resources. Well, that shows that they've never been around mechanical equipment that much because every motor that I've ever come in contact with has both a nameplate and a horsepower rating attached directly to it. So at any time, a codes enforcement officer in their, the doing of their duty can walk up to a bandsaw mill, walk up to the motor and look at it. And if it doesn't have the sticker on it that actually says the horsepower on it, they could take the nameplate reading and in one minute Google search can, from the manufacturer and ID plate on the side of the motor, determine exactly the horsepower in that motor. So it's not, it does not, it does not increase the need for staffing, does not increase the need for training. It is a very simple task that anybody with any mechanical application has, has been subjected to. Ah, let's see. Let's define a sawmill. So Section forty-five, eleven forty-four, it's in the code section of the Land Development Code, and it talks about, it's their citations code, where it defines all the, basically all the terms that we're using in here. It defines a sawmill. Sawmill means a facility for cutting, planting, shredding, or otherwise processing raw logs into lumber, mulch, or other unfinished wood products. This shall not be deemed to include cutting, sanding, otherwise working wood. That's finished stuff there on the bottom, furniture cabinets, whatever. But looking at that first section, sawmill means a facility for cutting, planting, shredding, or otherwise processing raw logs into lumber. So as a codes professional, if I walked onto a job and they had a machine that was taking logs from over here and spitting out lumber over there, it's going to be defined as a sawmill. That, there's, that, that is the word for word definition in the first line that the Land Development Code currently uses to define sawmills. Let's talk about some deficiencies in the Land Development Code. The Land Development Code does not provide for different classes of sawmills. All are lumped in one category and pretty much the same level of scrutiny is applied regardless of extent of use. Land Development Code paints sawmills with a wide brush, which is Land development code paints sawmills with a wide brush, which is most people's first inclination. You start talking about sawmills, they don't wanna say, well, there's this kinda sawmill and that kinda sawmill and this kinda sawmill. They just say sawmill. Sawmill is gonna cut timber into lumber and they're gigantic, they make a lot of noise, they make a lot of dust. They're, they're a nuisance in the neighborhood. That is not necessarily the, uh, the case. Sawmill only appears in commercial ag-related category, use category. If you search through the whole land development code, the only two places you're gonna find the, the word sawmill, the only two places in the whole land development code is in the use category ag, uh, commercial ag-related and you're gonna find it in the citations section where they actually define it. That is the only two places in the whole land development code where the word sawmill appears. Everything beyond commercial ag-related use category requires the interpretation of what's gonna be used there. And in, in planning's presentation before me, they said, they, they said that sawmills fall into a heavy industrial case without needing SUP. Like if you stick a sawmill in industrial, heavy industrial, there's, there's no problem with the use. It's completely conforming to the use. Well, that is for a full-on commercial sawmill. That is not for a personal hobby mill. So if you can, if you can, if you can interpret the extreme case to be the most restrictive in the heavy industrial and put it on that end, then it makes sense that the very smallest end of that can go the other direction. It can fall into an ag general use category. It's, it's, doesn't have as, any more noise than lawn, lawnmower. It's, uh, most of these things are portable on a trailer. Um, so they are really just a piece of equipment, no more than any other, uh, farm-related equipment that you would expect. Planning refuses to interpret small-scale personal mills as ag general use. That's one of the things that I've, I've, I worked the, the oh, excuse me, the, uh, special use permit for the bigger mill that came through a while back. I, I happen to be on the other side of that and me and Gabriel have had some spirited conversation over what is and what isn't allowed. And one of the things that planning just doesn't, is unwilling to do is view a small-scale saw as, as a tool that is not significant enough to, uh, or is, or is more significant, uh, than should be allowed to just be used, period. And although a lot of the current argument, or the, the current discussion that Gabriel had here a little bit ago, there's a hobby mill for your own personal use on your house or on your property, carrying your own logs is allowed by right. There's nowhere, there's nowhere in the land development code that we can, that me as a customer on this side of the counter that wants to do that can go and say, look, I can use this by right. It all requires an interpretation and their opinions of the interpretation of the land development code. And that's one of the things that I'm trying to do here is to, to make it to where we can say that is specifically allowed. So, uh, in my opinion, planning's got a complete misunderstanding of the different classes of sawmills, production levels, and the uses that are going on. And, and, and I don't mean that they don't understand the difference between a, a low-level commercial mill and a full-on industrial taking up two acres and having, I'm not saying that they don't understand between, um, that there are different grades of mills. I'm just saying that they, their understanding does not allow them to interpret enough of the land development code to make distinctions to e- ease up on some of these people that are using these sawmills. Uh, let's see, land development codes and sawmills. So currently, and this is, came up in the, in the previous uh, presentation, this is the section where it talks about sawmills. Anybody that has been around a sawmill knows anything about a sawmill knows that probably ninety-five or ninety-eight percent of the time, the wood is not coming from the same site that the sawmill is on. It just doesn't happen. That, that verbiage was introduced in oh, two or oh-six, whenever land development code got updated from the nineteen ninety-eight ordinance. So when, in eighty-eight, that line right there just said sawmill. It didn't have the restriction of, of the, of the wood coming from on-site. And we can only assume that they put that in there to restrict the size of the sawmill. But it, in, from a practicality standpoint, that, it doesn't make any sense. And nobody that you know that runs a sawmill is gonna say, yeah, I grow the trees right here next to where my sawmill is. It just, it just doesn't happen. Okay, so, and, and this was something that Gabriel touched on. Currently, there are, there, there is no way for me to call up here to planning and say, I'm gonna, I wanna install a sawmill where I off, I, I source trees from off-site. What do I need to do? Aside from being industrial, there's, there's, there's no place they can go to the land development code and define that. So it's gonna require some sort of interpretation. The, the proposed changes attempt to correct the vagueness of that interpretation. They, they, these changes, I intend to make it to where it takes it out, they, it, it, it doesn't put the responsibility on planning. It takes that out of their hands and he can, it's, it's as simple as saying, well, is it bigger than forty horsepower or is it less than forty horsepower? If it's bigger than forty horsepower, then we're gonna require you to get SUP. We're gonna evaluate everything that you've got going on. We're gonna consider it commercial and we're gonna proceed from there. That is, that is exactly how that determination you go. This is the simplest, easiest determination. So when it comes in and it's less than forty horsepower, then we, then that is simple. That's considered a personal use mill. And in, in the realm of personal use, exactly like you were talking about, having a hobby and sometimes you make money from hobbies. It's not uncommon for a personal use mill to offset some of their, their running expenses by selling a portion of what they're making there. But the, these mills are small enough that they do not make enough product to be considered a full-on commercial. You can't make a living with a, with a mill under forty horsepower. And I think that's important. By recognizing there's differences in mechanical capabilities of different mills, you should be obvious that sawmill should not be treated the same. And small-scale mills are no more than standard farm equipment. No more than standard farm equipment is exactly what they are. No louder than them. They do no, they, they, they process less material than what you would expect a commercial mill. They just are not, they are not large enough equipment to have the heavy hand of the government regulating them. It's just another piece of equipment. Building contractors use portable mills to create, um, mantles. They create rough-cut wood. I've, I have cut, uh, for instance, I had a job out on, uh, West River Road one time. It was old. It was a house built in the early nineteen hundreds and the stair treads were all odd dimension, rough-cut wood. And so when the, when the homeowner asked me to do work on it, and I was like, well, where am I gonna get this lumber? I was able to go to the sawmill, cut trees to the exact dimension of the old stuff. And so I am using that as a builder's tool, not as a product, not as a lumber production. I'm trying to be Home Depot number two. And I use that as a builder's tool, no different than a skill saw or table saw, to create the products that I need for those jobs. So it's, it's, it's a piece of equipment that does not need to be demonized as this large-scale, large-scale commercial production, uh, equipment. Difference in sawmills, commercial sawmills. Commercial and industrial-grade sawmills typically are completely hydraulic. They're almost, every function that's on them is hydraulic. They have, uh, roller tables, they have conveyor belts, they have all kind of ancillary equipment, not just the saw. They have a lot of additional equipment to both handle the timber coming on-site, whether it be unloading or transportation from where the, the, uh, timber is unloaded to the saw. And then movement and usage of the lumber downstream, loading trucks. Um, there, there is, there, in a industrial, commercial and industrial setting with a sawmill, there is a lot of additional equipment involved. Uh, production rates are high, power requirements are very often in, for just a sawhead are in excess of a hundred horsepower. Timber requirements are high, meaning they're bringing in lots of truckloads of timber and, uh, shipping out a lot of truckloads of lumber. So you, it, in a, a large commercial or industrial level mill, you would expect to see a lot of that truck traffic. Uh, hours of operation in industrial mill, you can't, you can't, you can't afford to keep an industrial mill open with all the stuff and all the employees without working it forty hours a week. So it's, you're gonna see forty hours a week operation and oftentimes more than that. And that's in an industrial-level mill. Mid-level mills, mid-level mills operate on a commercial level but are typically not used forty hours a week. I have seen some of these. Um, the special use permit that Gabriel and I worked on was in fact one of these. The mill didn't operate. It may have operated a day or two a week, oftentimes set idle for a month or more at the time. But it had the capability to produce enough lumber from, from timber to be commercially viable, to, to make it, to, you could make a full-time job out of that mill. Those mills typically operate between fifty and eighty horsepower. They, they can operate in excess of eighty and you, you can get by slightly less than fifty. But, but typically, you're gonna see those mid-level mills operating between fifty and eighty horsepower. They have very little manual input, just like the commercial mills that are basically all hydraulics. These mid-level mills, most of them are, are functions, the functions on them are all hydraulic. They raise and lower the head, they drive the head through the wood, they, they, they have rollers and loaders and they're all, they're, they're basically all hydraulic and it takes, all it takes is button and lever inputs to process this, this, these logs. Production rates capability are high enough to require stockpiling of timber and truck traffic may be required. So depending on the hours of operation and how much those mid-level mills are being used, you could have an adverse traffic problem there. You could have a few too many trucks going. You could have they brought in a little too much lumber, too much timber, or too much timber rather, and have to stockpile it here and that becomes an eyesore. The truck traffic's a nuisance to, so those are the type mills that absolutely need to be addressed with SUP. Those are the things that without a doubt should be become before Gabriel and then go into the zoning board of adjustment to say, what are the conditions of the property? What are, what are the, you know, the, the size of the motor, which is gonna determine the production rate? How, how is this thing set up and what, what are we doing here? What are the problems? Those things can be evaluated at the special use permit level and should be. That's not what we're talking about. So what I'm talking about today is right here, small-scale mills. Power requirements are low, less than forty horsepower. So we're talking about lawnmower engine on a, on a bandsaw blade. Loading and loading, loading and unloading is often done manually. Um, most of the small-scale mills that I've been involved with don't have automatic loaders where they unload timber. What happens is somebody else show up with a small dump trailer with four or five logs in it. Or they'll pull up with an old car trailer that they were able to drag two or three logs up on and then they have to horse them off the trailer. It's not a high-production, uh, operation. The sawhead operation is sometimes manually. Meaning whereas in some of the other bigger operations, you hit a button and then the sawhead goes up and down automatically to where it goes. Most of these small-scale mills actually has a crank, a hand crank. You crank that thing and it raises the head or lowers the head. And then, um, even, even the drive through the wood, where you would hit a button on a, on a full-scale mill and it would drive that head through the wood to saw it. Many of these mills, you, you stand next to it and crank the crank and it drives the head through the wood. It's a very labor-intensive process. Most are done as a hobby to build sheds and barns and porches and wood fence, whatever. But typically it's not high enough production rate where they're, they can afford to sell any of the wood. Production rates are extremely low, often twenty to thirty minutes to process one log. Now, when you compare that to a commercial operation that automatically loads the log, turns it where it needs to be, starts cutting, makes the can, and slices that log up in sometimes as little as a minute and a half. When you start comparing a minute and a half production rate to a half-hour production rate, you'll see that, that you cannot make money and you cannot produce enough wood with these small-scale mills for it to be commercially viable. And I know this because I have done this very same thing. I have done, I have processed these logs and it seems like an eternity. And I have people come and say, can I buy lumber from you? And I'm saying, absolutely not. I'd have to sell it at ten times the price of Home Depot to even break even because the, the cost and manpower is just ridiculously high for what you're getting. Most, most small scales don't typically, uh, stockpile timber and do not receive tractor-trailer loads of, of timber. So they're not, because of the limited production rate, you're not seeing semi-trucks come in there and offload a, a whole load of timber there. Because, because of the production rate being so low, if you offloaded a whole timber, a whole, uh, tractor-trailer, you would be there for weeks processing that one trailer load of. And that's not, that's not how these mills operate. These guys are buying these mills and, um, bringing in a log or two, most of the ti- you know, the tree surgeons often will cut pine trees out of uh, yards that are nuisances and to prevent having to pay to dump them at the landfill where they get charged out the ears, they will say, and if they know somebody with sawmill, they'll say, hey, you want these two logs I just cut out of Miss so-and-so's front yard. And it'd be like, well, yeah, so there's some free wood we can cut up and make something out of. And so we're getting a decent by-product from something that is not what would be a timber harvesting, harvesting, uh, process there. The timber typically, that's what I just explained. It's typically a product of other work. It's not a forestry-based timber harvest program that this, that these, uh, that this raw material's coming from. Small-scale mills are too small to have any noticeable truck traffic. Like you're not gonna, you're not gonna notice truck traffic with these mills because the production rate is so low. Okay, so when we think about an industrial sawmill, here's what we got. This is, this is the mulch plant up on highway seventeen, right before you get to the county line. They're just north of Boswick. It is what you would consider an industrial-level sawmill. It produces mulch, cuts whatever they do up there. They're operating on a SUP and they're operating on ag property. It's not industrial property, it's ag property with a, uh, special use permit. Oh, oh, I went, how do I back up? Let me go back one time right there. Here's another industrial sawmill. This is Turner Sawmill over on Turner Road in, uh, East Palaca. Been operating for a long time. It operates on an ag piece of property and it is only five acres. But it is truly an industrial, high-capability, high-production-rate sawmill. They have, in addition to the saw, they have multiple conveyor belts. They have all ki- exactly what I described a few minutes ago. All kinds of ancillary equipment for moving timber and, and processing lumber. This is not an industrial sawmill. This is a, I don't know, Timber King B two thousand, got less than a forty horsepower. You can see the nice little stack of lumber there, but that's just a portable mill uh, that you're seeing there that does not have a high enough production capability to, uh, there's another one. The sawhead's covered up with a tarp there, but you can see the small-scale uh, nature of that mill. Here's another one. That is not an industrial sawmill. That right there is, uh, is a woodmizer. Uh, LT fifteen or something. To process enough lumber on that to make money is impossible. I mean, it's, everything's man. You can see right there that the, you know, maybe they've got a little tractor there that they pull up there and set on that mill so that they can cut stuff up. But predominantly, this is, this is, this is made for making tables and making hobby stuff and yeah, maybe cut a little bit of lumber for the barn, but this is, it does not have the production capability to need to be required with a SUP. There you go. See how, see how small that is? I mean, you can see the engine size there. It's probably nineteen or twenty-horse engine. Nothing, nothing extravagant. Same thing you would see on a, on a lawnmower. Here's a small-scale mill right here. Again, completely, completely manual-driven, manual up and down, manual through the wood, no hydraulics. Um, as a matter of fact, there's a zero-turn lawnmower in the picture right there just for scale. You wanna see what, what size engine's on that mill and then look right there next to it, there is a lawnmower that clearly demonstrates what size that is. And here's my favorite one. So in the grand scheme of things, when we fall back to the definition of what a sawmill is, that's a sawmill. That's what they call an Alaskan sawmill. That's two chainsaws with a bar and a guide right there. And you can see that it's making, it's making unfinished slabs right there. That's a, a tree, a local tree surgeon who ends up with a lot of overflow from, from jobs he does and he's converting that into usable stuff. It's not finished wood though. And so in the, you know, th- this is an extreme case and by, by no means do I ever think anybody with any common sense would regulate that as a sawmill. But that's kind of the point of the day is to demonstrate the vagueness of what we got going on in land development code. So, uh, I tried to get him to send a picture without him in it, but he wouldn't do it. He just, I think he wants to be famous. Alright, so these types of mills are not a problem. That's what, that's what, uh, that's what we need to take out of today. All mills pictured are in Putnam County. Uh, all mills that I took a picture there are, are less than ten acres. All are powered by less than forty horse, with exception of the two industrial things that I showed first. Uh, all use wood from off-site. I think that's key because all these, all these, all these, and, and you, you could tell from the pictures in those mills around them that there's not a lot of production going on. going on. There's not, it's not beat down and, uh, you know, covered with sawdust and covered with traffic. These, these mills are used infrequently. Um, most are in ag zoning. I will say that one of them was in a residential area, but has never had a problem from any of the neighbors around and it's not used often enough to, to warrant them calling in, so, um, it, it just, it hasn't been an issue. But most, with the exception of one, all the rest of them were in ag zone property and that's the things that we're addressing today. Only one sawmill-related codes case has been made in the last two years. The complaint was for a mill with a horsepower greater than forty and was on a piece of property less than five acres. So, um, the, the, the only mill, and I'm gonna say that again, the only mill that's had a codes case on it in the foreseeable past that anybody in codes could, could remember had a, had a motor larger than what we're talking about today and was on a small enough piece and it backed up to residential, it backed up to about six or eight residential, uh, parcels that had houses on them and with the exception of one, one person, I think, the rest of them had just had it. And that, that mill had been in operation for like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years. Uh, here's the key to that one. That mill was granted a special use permit, so we've got a, a mill there that is, now granted, there was some, there were some, there were some, uh, stipulations that he had to adhere to to get that special use permit and build a enclosure around the saw so he could deaden some of the sound. I mean, there's, there was a handful of things that got addressed there, but again, we have a over forty horsepower mill on less than five acres that got a special use permit. So they saw it, the, the zoning board adjustment saw it in their, uh, wisdom to say that that was okay. So if, if, in my opinion, if that's okay and we can address all that, then these mills that I'm talking about, which aren't even half the, half of what was going on there, then, um, uh, that, that should just kind of demonstrate the small scale of what we're trying to do here. The fact that we, so many of these mills are in use and no complaints have generated demonstrates exactly why we don't need to o- over-regulate these small-scale mills. Permitted use. Here's, here's, uh, here is the use category ag general, which is, I think, the exact interpretation of what we need to be looking at when we say small-scale mills. Agriculture for the use related to production, keeping or maintenance, whether for sale or personal use of plants and animals for food, for fiber, which is trees, or ornamental purposes. Agriculture characterized by predominantly outdoor activities, cover very small portion of land, include agriculture, blah, 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 blah. But what I want, we need to get back there is it's for the production and keeping, for sale or personal use, plants and for fiber. That's exactly what we're doing here. We're making, we're making plants into lumber or other, uh, rough-cut products. So in ag, in ag general, it's understood that equipment will be used, trucks, tractors, generators, I mean, I, any, any farm operation has equipment that, to the layman that's never been around, equipment seemed like big, terrible equipment and loud and noisy, but to people that are actually working on a farm, working with it every day, it's just, it's nothing different than a hammer. They are, they are using equipment and the, 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 the small-scale sawmills fall into exactly that category. Um, one of the things they were talking about earlier was, uh, fifteen-acre parcel size for the commercial stuff, but ag general doesn't restrict parcel size in any function. Uh, small-scale mills don't require that much space. Obviously, they're, uh, if they were in a residential area, that would generate a codes case and then that could be evaluated, but for the, for the most, I think it's a disservice to try to put a, uh, property or parcel size limitation on such a small-scale tool. Small-scale mills are no louder than any other equipment typically in agricultural process. Trees are often salvaged from tree work, land clearing operations, we touched on that. Trees are not delivered in large loads, we touched on that. All these uses are consistent with ag general. Use of mills are rarely every day, more often than not, they're used very infrequently. They are not, you know, a lot of these mills, guys use them for stress relief. They'll, they'll get a couple of logs and they'll cut them up and it's, that is, that is the way they get away from their work week very often. Um, uh, they use them for small projects, but, but again, the, the, the production capacity's so low, it's not, it's not commercially viable. Production rate's limited because of small size of the mills, limited motor size, manual functions regardless of, uh, required for operation, often not being able to process two or three logs an hour. We touched on production rate. I can't emphasize enough that these mills cannot produce enough to be commercially viable. Okay, so now we're gonna discuss the proposed changes as I had it. And I tried to make this, uh, well, this, this one, this is, uh, the same one they had. So this is under the, um, the definition of agriculture in the ag district and the uses allowed in the ag district. And, um, this makes the function where we're not trying to force a SUP onto personal use mills. Uh, number six, sawmills for personal use where the sawmill powered by the motor does not exceed forty horsepower. That's change number one. And I have these backwards just because I felt like that, that agricultural, that definition in the agricultural district, uh, really kind of supersedes, uh, uh, the other one. But in the second one, which was probably first in y'all's list, um, I tried, I tried to, um, I actually e- emailed Gabriel and tried to add a little verbiage in there, but he had already advertised, um, their, uh, their opinions of what was going on. So this is slightly different than what you guys see and the, the, the change was sawmill where the sawmill is powered by a motor not exceed forty horsepower or has a special use permit, meaning let's get to the point where we're not concerned about things that are less than forty horsepower. Like let's not be concerned about these small tools, let's focus, let's, let's let our, our sawmill focus be on the stuff that actually can be commercial. So conclude, let's just, we'll wrap it up. Uh, mills under forty-five horsepower limited production capabilities can't process enough to be, uh, commercially viable and are consistent with ag general expectations. Most are used infrequently. The forty horsepower limit, uh, allows existing residents to contend the use of their mill in limiting, limiting, limiting commercial operations. It also gives, um, uh, planning a easily definable place because if I come in and say, or if codes comes in and say they got a commercial sawmill going on out there, currently it is up to the feelings and interpretation of planning to determine whether it's commercial or for personal use. That kind of does a disservice to somebody because we can have a two-day-long conversation on what is personal use and what is commercial, 'cause I can't seem to find in the land of development code where it's clearly defined. Because just like you said a little while ago, it's okay for hobby to make a little money. And so by defining the commercial use at the horsepower change makes it, makes a, makes a easy point of delineation so that there's not a, there's not a, there's not a vagueness of interpretation from planning and a, and a adversarial relationship between the, the citizen that comes in here and says, I'm not using it commercially, and planning or codes that says, yes, you are, this is how we see it. So in my opinion, the horsepower delineation takes all that, all that argumentative gray area out of the way. Noise is not an issue, no more than mowing grass or any other expected agricultural equipment. I think that's important because that has a lot to do with, uh, with, uh, some of planning's reservations about what's going on there. Code enforcement has, has not had any problems, any, any, this, this is just readdressing what I said earlier, they have not in the foreseeable past had any problems with these small-scale mills. And again, changes do not adversely affect the ability to require SUP for truly commercial price. So when it gets over forty horsepower or there is equipment beyond, and this is the other thing too, is, uh, planning or codes would be concerned about their ability to regulate. They're always concerned about their ability to regulate this or that, if we let you do this, then we don't have the ability to regulate. The ability to regulate from a codes or planning standpoint, as a building inspector, one of the things I've, I've said in my entire career is no job is ever one-hundred percent compliant, so don't argue with the inspector. And that's the same thing you have with the planning, 'cause there's no way in the world that you can be a hundred percent compliant. Now, you might argue with me and get this right, but there's five or six things over here that I'm gonna find out that are wrong and it's the same condition that you're gonna have with any of these small-scale mills. If you guys approve what I'm suggesting is a change, what you're gonna have is a, and you know, the theoretical condition from the worst-case scenario of the planning is, well, what if I have forty horsepower mill and they're running commercially and this and that? Well, the answer to that is you, you call them out on the additional equipment they're gonna have, 'cause that's what they're gonna need to be commercially viable. You're gonna call them out on the noise, 'cause they're gonna be making more noise than just running the saw. You're gonna call them out on the increased traffic because they can look back at this presentation and this meeting today and say that it was put to you guys that this was not a, a large traffic event or large timber requirements and they will be able to find an avenue to correct the problem without having to worry about whether or not the, the other hundred citizens had the ability to effectively use their stuff without an issue. So, um, don't think that approval of what I'm talking about is gonna take away from the ability of codes or planning to, uh, address problems as they come up.
All right.
That's what I've got, so.
Before we go to questions to Mr. Morris, a couple of things I do want to point out.
Okay.
We are eminently aware that there are deficiencies in the land development code.
Okay.
Uh, we will be addressing those going forward. In fact, there's an RFP on the street right now for a consultant to guide us through that process.
Right.
Number two, all that our staff can interpret is what's in the land development code and the, the comprehensive plan. So they're limited in their scope of being able to approve based on what is on the books in ordinance and comprehensive plan, well, in ordinance form. So I want to take them off the hot seat a little bit because they're just doing what they're being allowed to do.
I, I, I mean, I mean, no disrespect to that office, I'm, I am, I am, in my capacity in the town of Walaka, I'm actually doing some of the same stuff that he does, so I'm on the other side of the counter. I'm not, I'm not trying to bash that department. What I am saying is that there are a lot of gray areas and a lot of interpretations and, and a lot of those interpretations are, are made based on the history or, or work experience or other life experience that that person has been subjected to. And so coming from, there's a difference between somebody that's been in the office and somebody's been in the field and the, the views are a little bit different.
Absolutely. The other thing is I think we realize that there are different classes of sawmills. We realize and we appreciate, you're edifying us on the fact that what each one does and how each one operates and the fact that we have some in Putnam County. Uh, the one thing that, that we need to look at is we need to look at not just your operation, but operations going forward and how are they best permitted in Putnam County?
Right.
So that, that's part of it. We have to look at things like road capacity, uh, location, because location does involve different road levels of, of operation. So there are a lot of things that go into this. Now, do we go back and rewrite the land development code and try to put in every possible contingency? Or do we continue to rely upon ZBOA to look at each case individually? Those are the things that we need to look at, along with how do we get Mr. Morris's operation?
I'm not, I'm not talking about my operation. I'm here for about a dozen different people.
You're doing, you're doing general, okay.
I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing a general thing. And, and, and I can say that that ZBOA special use permit is an absolute atrocious, hard thing to get through and without, and, and I, I understand your concern about traffic and, and, and all the other things that go on, but, but if there's one thing that I can get through to you guys and, and, and pass on to you is what, what I'm talking about, what we're trying to regulate here today is of no, those are not concerned, those are absolutely not concerns. Because of the small scale of what, of what this equipment is, what, what your, what your vision of how the, how there's gonna be truck traffic and this and that is, is negligible.
But yet we still need to recognize that there are multiple levels and multiple categories of sawmills. And do we exempt one from an SUP and not exempt another? Do we blanketly say that anybody can put up a forty horsepower sawmill on whatever size property they want and have a tree surgeon come in with their big equipment and drop trees off to be milled?
Well, that, that, that's already allowed. That, that is already allowed by what Gabriel just said. I'm talking about bringing trees in from off-site, but...
This is the off-site that I'm talking about, 'cause that's off-site.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I mean, I follow you, but...
Yeah.
And answer, and answer your question, should, should you deregulate one and not the other? Yes, in my opinion, is yes. If it's less than forty horsepower, you should deregulate it and not care about what goes on around it because, because there is not the problem that you would have with the larger mills. There's not, there's not the traffic problem, there's not the sound problem. That's just...
But we also know that we don't have anything addressing medium mills or large mills in the land development code, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, that's...
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm not here to address the rest of the land development code. I can have one specific section that I'm working on.
We, we, we have to look at everything. So if we were to change the land development code right now and put in what I, this is my, this is me as the chairman speaking, and put in the provisions you're asking for, those provisions would also affect medium-sized mills and large mills. Yes, they would.
I disagree.
Because there's no stipulation on the different classes of mills. So I think that's one of the things we've got to look at in, in the land development code. Perhaps we can address something in the LDC at this point that regulates only sawmills forty horsepower or less and put that in and then leave the bigger ones and hope nothing comes up between now and then until we get to the LDC.
We have...
And they're mostly industrial, the large ones are industrial, heavy industrial.
And, and one of the changes, and that was, that was the change that I said I, I added a little verbiage to, that, um, that, uh, didn't, didn't make it on the original. Let me, let me back that slide up, um, and get to that.
Well, we have to work off what has been advertised.
Well, according to Gabriel, you guys have the ability to...
We can change it, we can amend it.
Okay, so in the, um, oh, that was it, let me go back forward. So, so that was it. So it, my original proposal, sawmill where sawmill is not powered by, to exceed forty horsepower. Well, I added this, or has a special use permit. That does what you're talking about in class, making two different classes of sawmills. So that, what that does, that says, everything below forty horsepower is considered personal use, small-scale sawmill. Everything over sixty is required either to be in a heavy industrial where it doesn't need a special use permit, or from this, this section right here, it would require, if it's over forty horsepower, it would require a special use permit. That's the language that, that I added to, um, the thing.
I think we've got two separate sections here and we need to dialogue with Mr. Morris more if you'd like to, but I think we need to look at two separate sections. We need to look at what he has proposed, whether or not we approve it, amend it, amend it or not, and then approve it or not. And number two, if we don't approve what Mr. Morris has presented, we need to look at the staff recommendation and see if there are any amendments to that and whether or not we approve that at this time. But those are the things we're looking at. Let's look right now, are there any other questions from the board to Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. DeSantis.
You're not here representing a developer?
No, sir, I'm not. I'm, I'm representing about, well, everybody I know that has a personal use sawmill. And there's, there's a lot of them in Putnam County.
You're representing a group of sawmill people.
Yeah, no, I'm not an official, no, it's not like an official, I don't know, sawmills or...
A consortium or anything like that?
I, I, I am a concerned citizen that saw a need to, to, uh...
You're not getting paid, just tell me you're not getting paid to do this.
I am not getting paid. Matter of fact, this thing cost me seven hundred and fifty bucks, which I'll never recoup.
Sure you will, you'll operate that sawmill and get that money back.
Yeah, well, if y'all let me get to using it, I'll be all right.
Okay, so you're representing group of people like you who have personal sawmills, small sawmills, small, small, that want to be able to operate them free of an SUP?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm gonna ask you a hard question. How many of you are currently operating those mills?
How many, how many of those mills are being operated?
Right.
Are you operating? All of them, all, all of them.
So all of you are operating them right now without a SUP and in codes violation?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct. That's, that was, that was the importance that I need, that's the distinction. Now, according to planning, they're, you know, they'll say, well, a personal use mill can be, uh, is, is allowed by right, but it requires an interpretation, it's not specifically in the code, so...
Exactly, and we recognize that code, so don't point the finger at Gabriel all the time.
No, 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 when I say Gabriel, I mean, that department, I mean, if, if you knew how many conversations Gabriel and I have had, we are, we are one step from being in a relationship.
I think his wife would object. Other questions of Mr. Morris?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't understand why we're even here discussing this if... if we've got numerous of these around and there's never been a complaint on one.
Well, it's, it's like this. If you've got a section of the road where everybody runs 80, but the speed limit's 60, you would feel better if they changed the speed limit sign to say 80. And that's, that's the cloud that's hanging over all these. Like, matter of fact, I, none of them wanted, like, I, I was going to show, one of the things I wanted to show, I showed the aerial photos from, from the mulch plant and from Turner Sawmill over there, and I wanted to show the aerial photos of some of these to show what a small impact, like, you couldn't even tell the mill was there, like, there's no truck traffic there, there was no and everybody that I talked to said, absolutely not. Do not put my aerial photo in there because they, they assume, and this is part of that cloud that I'm talking about, they assume that codes is in here with a notepad going, oh, that's, that, that's out at such and such and such a street.
We're not the revenuers and you're not operating a liquor store.
That's right, that's right. Well, that, but, but, but my, my point is, from, from this side of the counter, from, from the, from the citizen's side of the counter, and when they view an overbearing government, the thing that they want to do is be able to point to a line of code that says, I'm okay. And currently, we do not have that.
I can, I can respect that, but you also need to have a code or have means, if, let's say, somebody does bring a, a 40 horsepower
Right.
Uh, size of a lawnmower. I mean, you know, we, we get people in here all the time saying things are crickets and we know they're loud as hell.
Right, no, I understand that.
But we just go by, all we can go by is what you're saying.
Right. Well, I expect you guys have some sort of knowledge of, of motors or had done a little research, but at the same time, you guys
Have a lawnmower running, it's a whole different deal trying to cut grass versus cutting the logs.
Right, no, I, I agree with that.
It's not the motor running, it's what it, what the noise makes from the blade. It's not, has nothing to do with the motor, right?
That's part of it.
The way I would look at it.
Yeah.
But anyway, I think, in my opinion, is, the reason we have rules is, is if there's a complaint and somebody comes in and goes, because you're making too much noise with yours and you're really disturbing your neighbors.
Right.
There should be something in, that, that our government has to come and say, well, look, no, you can't do this.
And there is, there is.
Okay, well, that, that's good, but, but I don't, to, to change, I don't see a reason to change a code if there's no complaints.
Well
It's my thing, is, are people going out and knocking on, oh, you have a sawmill, you gotta stop it? I mean, if there's no complaints?
Well, so, it's like this. So, I got involved with a special use permit on a, on a mill that was, that was larger than this. It was larger than 40 horsepower. And that complaint was generated from a neighbor. And so, the, 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 the general consensus among, amongst the guys out there is, all it takes is one complaint from a neighbor and we have to go through that special use permit, permitting process, which is atrocious. Like, you guys understand what's going on here and you guys are in tune with this, but coming from, coming from a citizen that has no involvement, I mean, you know how people badmouth the building and planning and zoning for them requiring permitting over there. It's breeze for me because I do it every day. I go in, I get a permit, I know what information to bring in. Most people do not have that. Most people, if you sent them the same nasty letter from codes that says you're in violation, they lose their mind, they lose sleep. This is a, not, it's a very emotional piece to that, and
You're also infringing on somebody's, uh, the reason the complaint came out.
Right.
They're just not trying to get, get used.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's true in most, that's true in some cases. I, I mean, I agree with that.
But in 99% of the cases, they have a legitimate complaint because the noise is you know, people move out to the country and especially ag to get away from all the noise.
Right, right, right.
They don't want all the noise. And then somebody brings a sawmill by and I, I, I just don't see any reason in changing the code.
And the other
You've, you've made a very good argument. I mean, you really have, and, and you've convinced me that, you know, bringing in, uh, logs from offsite of a guy that is going out and cutting trees, and I, I would much rather see that wood go to use than just be thrown away or burned or going to the landfill. There's a lot of good in, in what you guys are doing. And I, I think is, I, I hope they just leave you alone unless you're causing a problem for your neighbor.
Right.
And I, I just think you gotta have rules to help the neighbor that
Well, I, in, in response to that, I, I appreciate that concern, um, but those, those things can be answered via different channels. If the noise is a prob- let's say, let's say I buy a 40 horse sawmill and I set it, that's the property line and I set it up right here, and I'm, I'm causing noise to the neighbor. That is, that is a noise complaint that can be regard, that can be regarded, whether it's a sawmill, a lawnmower, a dump truck, that, that, there, there are multiple avenues to address the problem without focusing on it, it being a sawmill. There, there, any, any complaint you can think of right now can be addressed through a different avenue other than it's a sawmill, we should regulate it. Sound, uh, debris, like if the, like the sawmill's kicking debris across
Yeah.
There is no complaints. You're not having, this isn't a major problem in the county
No, I
where there's everybody's coming down here complaining about sawmills.
Right.
You're not knocking on everybody's door and saying, you got a sawmill, you gotta get rid of it.
Well, let, let me, let me, let me say
Let's, let's, let's not have this debate too much. I think we need to stop.
Can I, can I make, can I make one more statement?
One more statement, then we're going to move on to Mr. Hafner.
My, my, my final statement in that would be, the citizens of Putnam County are self-sufficient people. And yes, they moved to ag to be away from stuff. The, the things that we do, uh, you know, that, that are not a problem now. We're experiencing a dramatic increase in people from other areas. That, as a builder, I see it. I see it, we're selling houses to people from out of state. We're selling houses from people that are, that are coming from other places that don't necessarily operate like we do in Putnam County. And so, part of the, the desire to get this change is to make it to where we can continue to use without the fear of, of reprisal, um, into the future. Because if I have, if I'm on a piece of zone to ag and I'm running my sawmill and I don't have the protection of something in the code that specifically says I can, and I have a neighbor moving, get mad and call in and say, sawmill this and sawmill that, and for the sake of it just being a sawmill, not because it's noisy, not because it's, not because there's
We, we get that.
Other than it's a sawmill, calls in, then I have that
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you. We, we get all of that.
Okay.
One thing I'm going to say is, we can't make assumptions and generalizations that everybody in Putnam County feels the way you do. The other thing I'm going to say, and I don't want to rebuttal on this, is special use permits are there also to protect the owner. They're also there to protect the operator, because if there were a challenge, you can show that special use permit and say, I am legally operating. So, there are two sides to that. Now, Mr. Hafner, you've been waiting patiently.
Yes, I have. My big concern about the whole thing is that I don't think the 40 horsepower solves the issue. I think the issue is, from another perspective, the issue is the production level and the ancillary equipment that goes along with that sawmill. There's a lot of different, I'd love to have one of these sawmills to play out on my property with. I don't, don't deny that. But if I were going to go out there and use something less than 40 horsepower, and I figured to myself that, okay, I can run this thing eight hours a day with just me and one other person, and there's, there's nothing that limits that, using the 40 horsepower level. I think there's got to be consideration of production. Production considerations bring about traffic considerations, et cetera, et cetera. That's my concern. I don't think the 40 horsepower level solves the issue.
Okay, and, and my response to that would be, um, that, that aspect, what the, the Okay, so you just came up with a, with a rhetorical situation there where you've, you've, you've bought in additional equipment to accelerate the production level of what would be normally a limited mill.
Yeah.
So, my response to that would be, that, that condition is going to be policed by the neighbors. That condition, if, if you set up, if you, if you, if you're trying to backdoor the system with a 40 horse mill and you bought in roller tables and this and that, and you're bringing in, i- it's going to cause you to bring in a noticeable amount of wood. It's going to cause you to have to ship out a noticeable amount of, of product. And the, the effect that you're talking about of increased production would be felt by the surroundings. Now, if that were something, that there were no surroundings, then it would, we'd be in the same condition of the recommendation from planning. We'd be out in the middle of ag with, on an arterial road and we're not subjecting any rest.
Okay.
But, but if, but if the condition, what you're talking about, were to come into play and in a residential area or somewhere where there were going to be a concern, the citizens would police that. They would call in codes, they would say
Again, if you only, if the only limitation you have or the only level that you are looking at is the horsepower of the motor.
Right.
I think that leaves a lot out of the other considerations. Now, again, I don't disagree with what you're saying in a lot of cases because I know what it would be like, having been a farmer a good bit of my life with some acreage, to be able to go out when I needed to make some good fence post or some fencing materials or things like that, to be able to crank that thing up and do whatever I wanted to do with it. I'd love to be able to do that. I, I think what we're more concerned with are those that would abuse that privilege. And there are always those that will abuse a privilege.
Oh, I, I follow that, but I think it's unfair to the citizens of Putnam County to legislate to the most extreme cases.
Okay, we're not debating. Are there any other questions of Mr. Morris? Okay, we're going to bring it back to the board. Thank you very much. We, we learned a lot from your presentation, okay? And we really do appreciate that. Okay, the first question that needs to be before the board at this time is, do we accept the changes to the land development code that have been proposed by Mr. Morris? Or do we reject those as been recommended by staff? And we need to discuss this among the board. Mr. DeSantis.
Everything that I've heard so far from the board makes common sense, in my opinion. We've had sawmills operating in this county for years. Now, I've been up here 26 years. I buy lumber sometimes from my local sawmill. Unfortunately, that man passed away. But I've seen no problems with the sawmills existing in this county. And this planning board per se, anytime there has been a problem, you look at it, we look at the problem individually, honestly, and if a change needs to be made, it would be made at that point. But right now, I see no reason at all to take up any of these changes because I haven't heard the first complaint about a sawmill in this county. And there's a lot more we could learn if we just take the time. We spent a year and a half, two years going over our whole code.
Our comp plan, not the code yet.
A little over two years.
Yeah.
But it never came up. So, we have time to go through this if we really feel that there's a need to change our existing rules and regulations on sawmills. And I think it's adequate. So, I don't think anything we should do right now to, to make a vote either way. I have seen no reason to make a change of any kind at this time.
We have to either approve or deny this case.
I would say deny, because that's where I'm going.
Just remember, the land development code is coming and we will be reviewing the land development code. And at that time, we're going to be charged with looking at all those loopholes that you can drive a truck through. And we're going to be charged with looking at ways that we can make this more reasonable for the citizens of Putnam County.
I like that word.
So, uh, yes, there's always going to be the long arm of government, but we can mitigate the problems by looking at things upfront rather than hindsight. So, foresight has got to be the thing we look at, so. Mr. Schweng.
Gabriel, I have, I'm a little confused. I thought I asked you earlier, when you was on this side, that I'll be the guinea pig. I'll, I'll be the homeowner. And I could have this, one of those pictures that we just saw, the small ones
Mm-hmm.
in my house, and I don't need a special use permit. Did you not tell me that?
You would be able to use a saw for personal use at your house.
Right, right.
And it would not require a special use permit.
But could you bring offsite timber in for that use?
We, we wouldn't even, the, the planning division and the code enforcement division wouldn't even look at that. It wouldn't really matter whether the, you brought it from offsite. I mean, most people, a lot of people who bring, um, who have hobby saws just buy them at the store, so, or source them from a friend, so, or source the wood from a friend. So, I would say a considerable amount of them don't source them from onsite. And so, the, the position of planning on that is that to get into, into specifications of hobby saws would be more detrimental to the homeowner than what we have now. Codes are, are moving towards not specifying every last use because then it binds the hands of the planning division and moving towards more of a, like, regulating noise and dimensions and things like that.
Well, if, if what we have now, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding what Mr. Morris wants to do, but if we can do what I just said, I mean, I can, I can have it and use it my own self and Jeb can bring me some timber to cut some trees down and I can play with it and do what I want. And I don't need a special use permit. So, the only thing that this thing here is wanting to do is to make a 40 horsepower motor the guideline for that small thing.
And eliminating not bringing in wood from offsite.
Well, we, he just said we can bring the wood from offsite.
Well, the code we would be striking, the proposal is to strike where wood is from trees grown on the site of the mill. So, that would allow offsite wood to be brought in under the proposal. The proposal also adds the 40, 40 horsepower.
Well, I like the 40 horsepower because that, the pictures help me. I mean, a sawmill to me is one of those big things, not the little toy thing. Even though that toy thing may be larger than my little cordless saw or, you know, what I've got, I think the 40 horsepower, that size puts enough restrictions on what really can be there. You can't have a 40 horsepower run the thing like out at the county line. I mean, I'm sure that horsepower out there is way in excess of that.
Well, and that's, that's a commercial operation.
And my, my other thing was, the, the commercial aspect of it, as long as there's no employees, I don't, I don't really want, in my backyard, I don't want to, I want to, don't want to go hire Joe Smith to come work at my place for 40 hours a week on my little hobby, the hobby thing that you're calling it, the little sawmill. As long as there's no employees, I'm fine with that. As far as selling stuff, I know Tooten sells stuff all the time and I have no problem with that.
Well, I think commercial comes in when there is an exchange of, of money for product. That's pretty much the definition of commercial. So, and with that, you can assume, which is never a good thing to do, that there would have to be additional employees that would be working to help produce that product that he could sell and make money off of.
Well, no, if, if I wanted to go make a Cypress table and he's got a Cypress and he cuts, he cuts me his slab and I, you know, I give him $20 for it or $50 for it, that's
Yeah.
That's not, in my mind, commercial.
Okay. No, it, it's, it's small scale stuff.
I mean, I don't really see, does, does staff have a problem as long as there's no employees? And as long as we keep it, I, I like the 40 horsepower thing. That gives me something to go by.
Okay, all we've got on the table, though, doesn't have anything to do with employees. We have the proposed ordinance as presented by the applicant. And then we have a recommendation from staff to deny that. And then we have a proposed ordinance coming from staff as a substitution. Those are the things that we can work on. We can, we can amend if we want to, but we need to have a motion on the floor before we do that. Let's get everybody's comment.
Yeah.
Chair.
Kind of going along with what Joel was talking about earlier. Is there really an immediate need for this? If we've got all these sawmills out here now, and I don't know, we may ask Justin to comment on it again. I don't know, but, uh, it just doesn't seem to me like it's something that that's critical that it be done immediately. Until we're able to come up with, with better guidelines and so forth, I'm still concerned about the, again, the 40 horsepower. I do see the limitations of that, but I don't see the limitations of the production levels that would be acceptable and that kind of thing. So, I, I just don't understand the need for this to get done right now.
Well, that's why, that's why I asked the question.
I understand where they're coming from, though. They don't want it over the top of their head, boy, believe me. I, 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 for one, am one that doesn't like government intervention in anything.
Right. Don't want the government. We're not the revenuers. Aaron?
I do appreciate your presentation, Justin, and showing us, educating us a little bit on what these things are because I really didn't know, honestly. Um, I did do a little bit of Google searching just to kind of educate myself a little bit. But, um, you have a ma- with what the staff is recommending, your big problem to me is But you have a, with what the staff is recommending, your big problem to me is that it's still going to require a special use permit, and it's got to be 15 acres.
Yes or no? With what staff's recommending, you'd still have to have a special use permit, and it would have to be 15 acres. Is that what you're objecting to?
The special use permit is the...
The special use permit for under 40 horsepower is what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to...
Under 40 horsepower.
Under 40 horsepower. I have, again, it would take you guys to make an amendment to get to where I put that additional, that last few words in there. But I put my glasses down.
Not to worry, we got it.
It says, "Sawmill where sawmill is powered by a motor not to exceed 40 horsepower," you know, that production limitation, "or," this is what, this is what addition to what I had on there, "or has a special use permit." That means everything over 40 horsepower, regardless of what you do, if you have, if you say this is my personal use mill at my house, but it's 50 horsepower, it has the production capability to go beyond just residential recreational use.
Okay, we got it.
You know, force you into a position where you have to get a special use permit.
Thank you. Joe, I want to ask a question of Gabriel. What is staff's position on that one bullet point? The proposed bullet point where he is saying, not to exceed 40 horsepower or have a special use permit?
Staff's position is that that's a vague statement. I'm not even exactly sure what that means. I know Mr. Morris just explained it, but...
Basically, the way I read it is it's saying that anyone can operate a sawmill on their property if it doesn't exceed 40 horsepower, but if a sawmill exceeds 40 horsepower, a special use permit would be required.
That's the way I, that's the way I interpret it.
See, but that does, still does not provide any kind of standards for the increase in intensity that's brought on by a sawmill that sources most of its wood from off-site.
Well, most of your, most of your wood's going to be off-site.
It's going to be off-site.
I guess back to my, since I still have the floor.
You have the floor.
You do, Aaron.
That's why I don't get to talk, that's why I want, I'll give, I'm going to put my two cents out there.
I think it is reasonable to put some sort of size minimum, because what you have doesn't have any size minimum of the property. It could be on one acre in ag.
Right.
I mean, I think five acres would be the minimum that I would say, you know, if we agreed to do this.
Would five acres give you the 500 feet setback that's generally accepted for noise?
I'm not exactly sure that it would, and we have some subdivisions that are purely residential, but zoned agriculture that are five acres.
Right.
An example is, and this might not be a great example, but the Dreamfield subdivision, it doesn't have power to it, but one day it will. I've seen many of these antiquated...
They probably have deed restrictions that would prevent something like that, maybe.
Potentially. Actually, somebody asked me about those deed restrictions and whether they were still in force or not, just recently from...
Yeah, that's a little bit of a mess.
But...
I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, what he says, what he's wanting has no size minimum. So I think, you know, the size minimum on there is a reasonable thing. 15 acres, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's 10, I don't know, I'm just...
Just to explain where we got the 15 acres from, we took municipalities like, or counties like Latua, Bradford, Clay, we may have looked at St. John's, I don't remember, but the 15 acres, all of those counties, or at least a majority of them, had a minimum of either, between 15 and 20 acres.
For sawmill.
So we went with the lower. Many of those counties have had studies done. We've done an analysis here, but we didn't have the resources to do a full study.
Can I ask a question further? Does, did those counties have, you have to have a special use permit, or you can do it in that?
Yeah, and I wish that...
If you have that land size...
I had printed that out, but I know a number of them did. I don't know if all of them did, but I do know that a number of them did have a special use permit requirement, or a special exception requirement, which is the same thing.
Uh-uh, just wait, just be patient. It's back up to us now.
So I guess my point is, I don't, I understand, you know, why they're, why Justin's asking for this.
Yep.
And I don't have a problem with it with some size limitations, and maybe even without the special use permit, as long as you have that size, but that's just me, and I'm one of seven, or eight, or however many.
I think we're seven of us today. Okay.
Yes, I've been to a small-scale sawmill that was under 40 horsepower in Volusia County, and I believe it was on a 10-acre piece of property. And I can tell you, my buddy ordered some wood, and it took a month to get it. But this gentleman got his wood because his son was cutting trees and stuff, and he'd go help cut trees. But they were using the wood and stuff, and they cut the wood, and you're not going to set the world on fire on 40 horsepower left. He had about a 30 horsepower, and it actually was quieter than I thought it would be. And he ran it while we were there, and they stacked the wood by hand, and all they did was load it up on a car trailer with a little John Deere tractor, a Kubota, whatever it was, and that was about 35-horse tractor. So it's only going to pick up so many boards at a time. So he had to probably put it on there five times to stack it up. But I understand where Mr. Morris is coming from, is these new people are moving into the county, and they think they can run the county. I've been a city commissioner before in Crescent City for 20 years. I've run into that. First thing they did, new people coming to town, "Well, we need a dog ordinance, we need this ordinance, we need this ordinance." And it's been the same forever, but they want to raise hell, and then it just makes all the neighbors mad, and then you got to come up here and do your case to protect what you've been doing for 20 years that's already been there. I have no problem with 40 or less horsepower. You bring wood from other areas, you might have a helper help you stack the wood, because all they did was cut the wood, and you had to have two people stack it. Well, the one guy that was cutting, he cut, and then his helper just stacked it up on the thing, and then they loaded on the trailer. But it wasn't that noisy. And, you know, like you said, and you don't have traffic every day. You might load one car trailer a day if you run eight hours a day. You're not going to set the world on fire, I promise you. It's not a big commercial thing under 40 horsepower, I promise you. You're not going to set the world on fire.
It takes a while.
Yes, it does, but it's cool. And he charges just enough for a little bit of labor and time, but it was just more of using the wood up for a good use than then throw it on a trash pile and burn it or put it in a landfill. You know, charge a little bit of nothing, it's like, my God, but, you know, you just got to wait for it when he gets time to do it.
Gets a room to it, yeah.
And the extra wood that he had, and get the straight boards, what he needs to make it work.
Okay.
I just worry about, like Mr. Morris says, these people coming in from other places, especially New York. I've been there, done that.
Well, you came from Maine.
I come from New York, Long Island. Three months later, I was in Crescent City, Florida, but I was up there, but I know how crazy it is up there or something. If you do something wrong, they're calling somebody, I promise you. And they come down here, and they want to bring their New York ways.
Okay. We got you.
Okay.
We're not going to point fingers at the north, our brethren across the Mason-Dixon line. We love you, Joey.
I'm just a transplant, that's all, I promise you.
Joel?
Yeah, the only thing I have to say is, I've already said a lot, but it looks like the simple solution to this thing is just take sawmill out of the ordinance altogether and not even list it. And if it becomes a problem, then it goes under the noise ordinance, or too much traffic, or whatever. But it seems to me the most simplistic thing is, is instead of no, saying any size motor, it doesn't say that you can, you know, the ordinance doesn't say that you can't have or that you can have a, you know, have a table saw. It doesn't, the ordinance doesn't say you can, there's a lot of things ordinance doesn't cover that you have.
Didn't.
So if you, if you just take it out of the ordinance totally, and make it where there's, just strike the line that the applicant made, is just striking the line, and where he added something, don't take both of those out, in my opinion, and just leave the sawmill out of it. It's not something that you would, it's not saying that you can have it, it's not saying that you can't have it, but if it becomes a problem, then all of the sound, you know, whatever problem it's causing, because I can see how a neighbor could complain because of noise and stuff like that, but they can complain no matter, if I do a lot of things on my property, they can complain.
They can complain about anything.
Yeah, if I'm a nuisance, and I think that might be the solution.
Am I wrong? If you removed it, then it would just be under industrial period, right?
Well, it wouldn't be classified at all, I mean...
A sawmill would, but personal use of a saw would continue to be allowed.
Right, right.
But then that would take away, that would then create a nonconformity for those who have received an SUP to operate sawmills, and staff would not recommend entirely eliminating sawmills. But as a clarification on placing something, a use in by right, we, staff would not have recourse if there's a complaint and something is, to use Mr. Hafner's word, abused, which is a good word. We, code enforcement would go out, there would be a listed use that says sawmill under 40 horsepower. It'd be very vague, and there would be no recourse for that property owner because we would have nothing to go by. The only recourse really would be a nuisance lawsuit.
Let me, let me propose something here, and I want Gabriel's response from it first. If we were to do nothing right now, leave the ordinance as it is, but understand that at the time when we get to sawmills in the land development code, we have a much better understanding of what we're working with, thanks to Mr. Morris's expertise, and we would know what's going on. We're looking at, we hope to get into the land development code probably around June, I would imagine, maybe earlier if we get the consultant on board. But it will be probably two and a half to three years before that land development code becomes official, because we have to work through however many hundred pages of the darn thing. Then it has to go to the Board of County Commissioners, then it has to go to the state, and then it has to come back to us. So it's going to be a process. It took us eight months, I think, from the time we took the, not quite eight months, took the comp plan to the Board of County Commissioners, and the time it became official, I believe that was December 26th.
It may have been January 7th.
But it was somewhere in there, but it took a long time, you know, six months between the time we got, we left, it left here and then came back to us. LDC's liable to take longer. So what is the danger, and I know this is not what you want, Mr. Morris, but what's the danger of leaving the ordinance as is?
I don't believe there would be any danger. The only issue, and I'm not even sure if this is an issue, really, I mean, we, we saw that there may be a need to operate a sawmill sourcing wood from off-site, but truly, we haven't received any citizen commentary on that.
Yeah, Mr. Morris.
I'm not talking. I'm getting my thumb dropped off.
But I don't see, I really don't see any danger in that other, no danger.
Okay. And right now, that would only, because Mr. Morris has been the one who's raised his head and on the radar screen, he would be expected to apply for an SUP.
If the applicant, or any of the other individuals that the applicant is representing is just running a personal saw, there would be no...
There's no problem.
No problem.
And we're going to leave that to interpretation and to the app, well, any individual in their conscience and planning and zoning, should something come before codes enforcement.
Correct. The only reason that there was a case recently was because there was a code enforcement complaint about the dumping of logs that was causing vibrations, and they were causing a considerable amount of noise, too. And it was investigated, and there were, there was no SUP, but we don't proactively seek these out.
And I hate to say that we have to only be in a reactive mode, but given the size of staff, I mean, we're, we're working at a minimal staff level in a growing population. And given the fact that there have been relatively few complaints, are we in a position that we do nothing and say codes, or say staff, you can either bring us a comprehensive sawmill code amendment, or have one ready when we get to that in the LDC?
That's an option that the commission could vote on as well, or recommend, I should say.
Well, I like that idea. I was going to suggest that, but you beat me to it. Just wait till we get to the land development code.
Then you make the motion, Mr. Frolik.
I'll make the motion that we wait till the land development code, he addresses the sawmill.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Chair, if I may...
So that would then we deny, we have a motion to deny the request?
I'll make that motion, that we deny the request, as stated.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor right now.
Oh.
You want to combine those motions, gentlemen?
Nothing, sir.
Yeah.
Joey and Tom, get together, one of you combine those motions, and we'll...
I'd like to combine those motions and reject the case number CA 21-005, that application.
And?
I'll second.
Wait a minute, and?
And.
And?
And delay anything until we get to our planning, next planning meeting on...
Address sawmills when we get to it in the LDC.
Land Development Code.
Okay.
I shall move.
Who seconds that?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to reject the request to amend the land development code concerning sawmills, and to address, you know, address the issue of sawmills comprehensively in the land development code when we get to it during the LDC revision.
Yes.
Is that what we have? Are you ready for a vote?
I'll ask Gabriel a question.
Go ahead and ask Gabriel a question.
You're reasonably confident that doing this really won't hurt all of those folks out there with these sawmills right now for a while, right?
Well, I'll say, I don't know what their operation is out there. I've never seen their operation, so if it's such that it would fall under the definition of a sawmill and fall under the requirement for an SUP, then if someone complained, then we would have to require them to have an SUP. But I've never been out to those sites or witnessed their operation.
So if the people who are currently operating sawmills, without an SUP and assuming that they're personal saws and personal sawmills, continue to not generate any complaints from neighbors, there shouldn't be a problem with them, is that correct?
There should not, with the only clarification that, I just want to clarify that a sawmill is a whole facility dedicated to this, or an area dedicated to the processing of, processing of logs to create lumber. If somebody has a bandsaw at their house, and it's just sitting there, and occasionally they use it, I don't see how that would ever be classified as a sawmill operation.
So, just so I know, the pictures he showed of the ones that just had like a single trailer and a saw at the end with the motor, you wouldn't classify that as a sawmill?
I would not. The code...
Running every day, maybe.
I mean, if they, if they have several of those, and they start creating issues with odor, noise, dust, things like that, aesthetic issues, then potentially, we would consider it a sawmill. But I don't know of a single code case that we've had on that, and we are, we always interpret the code to benefit the property owner. It's required by our new property rights element and by our code. It's always been required by our code. So I don't, I don't see us interpreting it so narrowly, and I don't think that anybody could reasonably interpret it. So even if I were to be gone and anybody else interpreted it, I don't think that an interpretation like that, that was so narrow, that deprived, almost resulted in a taking of the property, could be upheld in court. And I use that word, "taking," lightly. I don't know that it would ever be considered a taking, but...
So basically, the code as it stands, we know is theoretically written to protect the property owner, and we know that that's going to be a major driving force going forward with the amendment to the land, amendments to the land development code that we're going to be doing with review. We should be okay moving forward, and we're not going to go out and send the tree police out to ferret out all of these sawmills, or, you know, send drones up over Putnam County or anything like that. We're not looking... We're not looking for an illegal still, we're, 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 these people are going to be able to continue operating their personal mills or their personal saws.
Personal saws, a- as long as they're hobby, uh, saws.
And we're not going to get into that right now because the code does not delineate that. Mr. Perry, are you having heartburn over what we're proposing?
No, no ma'am, not at all.
Okay.
Okay. At that point, then, let me call for the vote, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Chair votes aye, all opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Miss.
I'll explain that, I just think that we could have done something. I, I think doing what the, the staff recommend was, would be worse than doing nothing though, right, I would think.
What staff recommends?
Well, we've, we've already voted.
It's already voted, so I'm just, that's why I voted, I think we should, you know, try to.
And I voted no.
Why didn't you say that? Why didn't you say that?
I did.
Okay.
It's good.
Okay.
And I voted no because if Gabriel tells me that we can do it and the only thing we needed to add was 40 horsepower or less, it's sort of ridiculous not to do something that simple.
But that wasn't the only solution and we also had adding that.
We kicked it down the road.
I know, we kick the can a lot. We're going to be re-studying this and we're probably going to be calling upon you to return with some of your presentation because this board is fluid and we may have new members. And your explanation of the different classes of saw types and saws that are used in the milling of wood was excellent. We do understand your position, we understand your passion and we appreciate your passion. With that being said, I thank you for representing your colleagues, your cohorts, and I thank you very much for exercising that civil liberty and right to come before us because that's very important. We may have said no today, we probably will not say the same thing the next time this comes up when we come to amending the, the LDC. But we want to protect your rights as much as we can with that. Thank you.
Old business next?
Pardon?
We got, we have to approve the old business?
Do we have any old business? I, I do want, Gabriel has already told us that we have official approval of the comprehensive plan, that it is now official and we're operating under that. So anytime you see ag, you will not see ag one or two. Uh, you will see the different statuses that we put in the comp plan. Uh, also, I was speaking with him before the meeting about the status of hiring a consultant for doing the land development code. The first round that RFP was on the street did not elicit people who met the total qualifications and were not, was not an adequate pool to pull from. So that is back out on the street now?
No ma'am, it is not, um, it, it will be coming at some point. Um, it has to be advertised still and just as a clarification, it just, it didn't elicit the amount of interest that, um, that staff was looking for, um, and so, that's.
And, uh, tell, Joseph has been hired since our last meeting.
Yes ma'am, um, Joseph is no longer here, but Joseph comes to us from St. John's County. Um, he has almost 15 years of experience in planning. Um, and so far, he's proven himself to be a good asset to our department, so he fills the role that Wendy, um, Hickey had, she retired back in November.
Okay. Yes, and we did not announce that at the November meeting blatantly. Uh, I did say a few things about Wendy, she did not want to be acknowledged as retiring in November. So I did not do that, but we all appreciate the efforts and the work and the dedication that Wendy Hickey put into her position in planning and development, so, uh, with that. Is there any new business that needs to come before the board?
I have one suggestion.
Yes, sir.
We have a newspaper in this town. Why don't we put something about our comp plan approval in that so everybody would know?
Because I, I would, my answer to that would be the newspaper charges us quite a bit of money for any kind of advertisement and, um.
All right, we'll do it, I'll, I, you give me permission, I'll get it in there for you.
No, let, let's let, let's let Gabriel call Sarah Cavasini and see if she would be willing to do an article on the approval of the comp plan.
They should do it as a public service.
Yes.
Yeah, would you do that and do it officially from your position rather than one of us talking to, to Sarah? Uh, I'd much rather have it come from staff because we don't really speak in public other than here. Um, thank you for that, thank you for that. Um, okay, we're up to the, uh, is there any other new business? Yes, sir.
I quit.
No, you can't.
We got one good thing, I quit, I'm going out on a high.
I think I would, I would be remiss to.
She's got one held over for you for next meeting though.
Uh, I think I would be remiss in, uh, expressing this board's condolences to the family of Craig Sharar. Craig was in very presence with the, the Putnam County Planning Commission through the years. Uh, I know going back when I first came on the commission, he was a regular speaker and his dedication to doing things the right way in Putnam County did not go unmissed. And although I never totally agreed with him, uh, we did have a very collegial relationship and I think we had a mutual respect.
He offered a different perspective.
He did, but, uh, they were good because you have to have that other side of the story. So, um, if you didn't know, Mr. Sharar passed away, um, earlier, or last Friday, I believe.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and, um, he will be missed in Putnam County.
He brought the South Florida instead of the New York version.
There you go.
Yeah. See, when he, when he, when I first met him, the first time he spoke, my son lives right around the corner from him.
Yeah.
Out in East Plack?
Yeah, in East Plack, my son lives at 141 Pine Tree Road.
Yeah.
Miss, Miss Scherer lives at 147.
Yeah. He brought the global perspective.
His driveway to go to my son's house is right beside his property and he, and it kind of goes like behind it.
Yeah.
And, uh, my son didn't even know it when I called, when I seen it in the paper, I called my son, he didn't even know it.
Um.
It was kind of scary, you said.
I think it's, it's a sad thing, but I, I, I do think he brought the global perspective. Not just the New York perspective or the Miami perspective, but, uh, he made us, he made us do our jobs a little bit better and that, and that's always something we want and certainly Mr. Morris today has made us aware and thinking about things that I don't think many of us had on our radar screens.
Right, it definitely would have not been something that we.
No, I appreciate him coming and explaining all that because I've seen little sawmills.
No, I have too, and I've, I've been to them.
There's one in South Putnam, but I guess it's not in operation no more.
Yep, there is.
I have an idea what a big one and a little one is.
Yeah.
That's right.
I'm going to call him up, see if I can get some work done on one of the sawmills.
It, it's, it's not like when I lived in Georgia, they would, they would do aerial photographs and look for wisps of smoke coming up out of the woods. Uh, the aerial photograph they had for years of Waycross Junior College, there were two of those off in the distance and I thought, hmm, what's back there? Do I have a motion or are there any corrections or additions to the November minutes as they were presented to us?
I don't know if we approved them.
I second.
Okay, um, all those in favor for approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all of those opposed. The minutes have been approved unanimously. And I'm looking for the signature page.
She'd be the last one.
That's what I'm looking for.
That's a good suggestion.
You are.
Two in one day.
You are on a roll today, I guess it's the long pants, Ken.
Do we have a lottery?
I don't know, but we should go play it. Thank you all very much, this was a, this was an arduous meeting, but it was one of those that really edified us and gave us a lot more information than we've had before. And I thank you, has everyone signed the, uh, visitation sheet? Where is the visit sheet? Joel is hoarding the visit sheet. But, uh, Gabriel, what's coming up in March?
St. Patrick's Day.
Joel, you didn't initial it.
Um, we actually don't have anything set for March right now, we do have an application to remove an old PUD on a large tract, um, between Plack and Bostwick, but, um, there's, there hasn't been much movement on that from the applicant, so we're not sure if it'll come in March or April.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You know where Rolling Hills is?
No.
You know where Hussin Avenue is?
Yes, sir.
If you take Hussin Avenue all the way to the south, you're in Rolling Hills.
Oh, okay.
Now, the land that they're clearing and doing site work, it, it's going to be what?
Behind Rolling Hills, it's a sod farm.
It's a sod farm?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sod company bought it.
And if you've been.
I mean, they may be planning something else, I'm surprised, I know they're, they're potato farms from Hextons bought it for sod.
Clearing it the way they're doing, yeah, they could, it definitely be sod. Um.
How many acres is that?
I would imagine there's probably.
I think it's like 200-ish.
I would say, well, I don't know how far they go, but at least, I'd say two to five.
I think it's like 270 or something, I can't remember, and they bought it a few years back.
Joe, I've got a question for Joel, do you have any, anything coming up on the Johnny Morris property down in, uh, Satsuma?
Willack and Satsuma.
Yeah, just north of Willack.
There is a property that, um, is owned by the Floridian LLC based in Missouri. Sorry?
The Floridian Sports Club, it's been there for years.
Well, this one is owned by an entity called the Floridian, um, they, they're also based in Missouri. Um, the, the property, so there, there's an application, a class three development application going through right now for, um, a 14 acre, I believe it's a 14 acre pond, and please don't quote me on that because I can't remember, but it's a large pond, very large, several acres, um, and several berms along Cisco Dirt Road. That's the only application that we have, um, in process right now, the Development Review Committee issued a preliminary development order. They have to come back and submit final site development plans. Um, and then a final development order will be issued and then they'll be able to move to technical review for issuance of their construction permit.
Okay, I ask only because, uh, both sides of County Road 309 now supposedly have been purchased by the, uh, Johnny Morris.
Yeah.
And he's developing on both sides now, he's already put a big pond in on the old Floridian Sports Club side and they must have had three or four draglines working now for the last five months on the east side of County Road 309, which I believe was the old Treadneck property?
Yes, it was all Treadneck.
They dug tremendous lakes and berms and everything, so there's big development that's going to happen, they say, and again, it's, I was, why I was curious if anything came before the county yet.
So, I, I haven't seen that development, but any kind of earth-moving, major grading work like that would have to come for a, a development review through the DRC.
That's why I ask, because the, the property that had been purchased now at least three or four months ago and the cranes have been in there now for at least two months or three months, since Jan, before January.
A lot of land has been cleared in that area.
Well, it's, it's a lot of clearing going on and a lot of new entrances and exits coming onto County Road 309 and supposedly all the way up to the Acosta Creek Marina has been purchased by the same owner, which I understand.
Yes, the same owner, the Floridian LLC has purchased. Um, that, that entity has purchased quite a bit of acreage between Pomona Park and Willack and then closer to Satsuma also. There's an antiquated subdivision that was purchased.
Pretty soon then.
The other question I would just ask so you can clarify to the board, if you've been reading the paper and seeing action from the county commission, you know that there will, there was an ordinance draft presented to the county commission dealing with biosolids and that will ultimately have to come through planning and development, the county commission waived the application fee, I believe, for that.
Yes, ma'am.
But it will ultimately come to planning and development and will come through us as an ordinance, uh, change. Um, J, uh, Gabriel, what's the status on that for us?
Um, we have no application and no active application for that ordinance change. Um, I have spoken with the applicant, or the person who will be the applicant or agent for the group, um, but I have no application.
Now, will the agent be Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, uh, from my understanding is what, uh, that's, that's what, what's been represented to you.
This is different than what the zoning board is hearing next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Zoning board is hearing the case for Jenny Girl, which we did a, a land use amendment on last summer. And they will be hearing the case for the application of class B biosolids on a 57 acre piece of land in the middle of that, uh, property that they own.
They, they've reduced it to 47 now?
They've reduced it to 47.
Yes, ma'am, and the total site now is a 500 acre site.
Has DEP approved it, they're, they're permitting?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, we are expecting to have DEP, um, an expert witness from DEP at the meeting at the ZBOA, I, I'm awaiting confirmation of that. Um, I, I got a preliminary confirmation yesterday, but final confirmation should be coming soon.
That meeting will be the 28th?
Uh, no, no ma'am, uh, it's the 16th.
16th, next Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's coming up before ZBOA, that, that's a special use permit that doesn't have to come before us. So that's what that is. Any other business that needs to come before the board?
Nothing from Bass Pro, that's what we did.
That's the Johnny Morris property.
But they haven't submitted nothing through you?
Well, the, the only property, the only application I have is the one I described, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I I hesitate to say it's Bass Pro, it's not really Bass Pro, it's the Floridian LLC who may be working with.
Mr. Morris is the CEO of Bass Pro.
Mr. Morris owns all of it.
All right. We're adjourned at 6:43.